A little sooner in this cold weather.
Yeah.
I don't get quite as late as I'm, I've been charging a little sooner.
Well, you just like, you don't just take off and go to, you know, you don't take me to Chicago without thinking about it.
That is a different mindset.
Can we go on, or go on to other cities?
I tried to find them last week, but it's, we probably, well, that's what didn't happen.
Yeah, that's why you can't find this.
But when I searched, planning commission.
The one I ever seen in my life before I bought my house.
Oh, because we haven't had.
He, he are doc, retired, comes from Colorado.
And then like.
And I just talked to him, we were down there in November, I heard, he did it last year, but he go, how was it? And now I got one, I, he said, he said it's really, they're coming on major highways. He says, and he's got all wheel drive, so he has only like two fixed backs. But he says we go about three hours.
It's an open session.
Then we stop, we start, we go again. But he's coming.
But I didn't know.
He's pretty honest guy, so.
He's very.
When, when.
Yeah, I think he's, I think he has a rhythm.
We're ready to roll? Let's do it. Do roll call.
Okay. Member Cameron?
Here.
Member Cole?
Here.
Member DeGroot?
Here.
Member Mayor Kramer?
I'm here.
Member Beckwith?
Here.
Member Stevens?
Here.
Member Elsa Ramey?
Here.
And member Gar.
Here. All right, calling me in order. Uh, first up, we have the minutes from our previous meeting, which was way back in August. So you've had seventeen months to read these, so. I hopefully got all your changes and additions ready.
I was ready at the other meeting time.
Yeah. Yeah, we didn't have that last week.
But I was prepared.
Uh, is there anybody who would like to make any comment on those minutes or suggest a motion to approve them?
I'll move to approve the minutes from August seventh, twenty twenty-three. Bye bye.
All right, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Uh, next up would be public comment, that would be any public comment unrelated to the issues on the agenda. Seeing none. We'll move on to the public hearing, we open the public hearing first, right? Open the public hearing for special use permit. Commercial mini storage facility at six ninety-five West Chicago Street. Got the information in your packet?
After me. Okay, so special use permit twenty dash, twenty-three dash oh-two. Uh, this is a request from Justin and Eileen Sweet for their property located at six ninety-five West Chicago Street. Uh, for the use of commercial mini storage unit facilities. Uh, the property is actually zoned both C-three highway commercial district and D-one light industrial district. Uh, you'll see that in your note, uh, in the photos I provided, um, in the packet. The adjacent zoning to the property is C-three highway commercial district, A-two, one and two family residential district. D-one light industrial district, A-three multiple family. A-A agricultural residential dis- district, C-three highway commercial district. Um, and the adjacent development would be health institutes, park properties to the north. Uh, new beginning psychological services and heritage park disc golf course and dog park. Uh, to the east is residential, it's a lot, legal non-conforming residential housing. Uh, to the south is Robbery Park, and to the west is both park and commercial business, uh, Robbery Park Boat Launch and the P S Food Mart. Purpose and intent of the C-three highway commercial district is intended to meet the needs of highway oriented business requiring high visibility, relatively large land area. Uh, commercial mini storage facilities are a, uh. Used by special permit. Uh, mini storage means building or group of buildings which contain varying sizes of individual compartmentalized and controlled access stalls or lockers for storage of consumer goods or wares. Uh, your discretionary general standards are the same as always, the same five. Uh, the special land use shall be harmonious with and in accordance with the general objectives, intent and purposes of this code. The special land use shall be designed, constructed, operated and maintained in a manner harmonious with the character of existing and future land uses on adjacent property and the surrounding area. The special land use shall not contain the essential character, shall not change the essential character of the surrounding area. The special land use shall not be hazardous to adjacent property or involve uses, activities, materials or equipment which will be detrimental to the health, safety or welfare of persons or property through the excessive production of traffic, noise, smoke, fumes or glare. The special use shall be required to serve the public sanitary sewer and water supply systems when available or other systems approved by the health department and served adequately by other essential public facilities and services such as highway, streets, drives, sidewalks, police and fire protection, drainage structures, refuse disposal, or that the persons or agencies responsible for the establishment of the proposed special use shall be able to provide adequately all such services. Further, the special use shall not place demands on public services and facilities in excess of current capacity. Uh, staff comment regarding this application. Uh, the applicant needs to provide professionally engineered drawings due to the scope of work associated with the project. Um, any decision by the planning commission at this point would be for authorizing the proposed land use only. Uh, decisions should include requirements to have all zoning and building codes met and approved by city staff prior to commencing work. Uh, stormwater management plans have not yet been provided or reviewed. Uh, and soil erosion plans and permits will need to, will be required, uh, to be submitted and approved by the city. So like I said, any decision by the planning commission tonight would be for land use only. I have provided images of the property, uh, from the nor, uh, images of the site from U S twelve from the north side. I've, uh, included interior, uh, pictures of the interior site facing north, um, and interior of the site facing south. And then I included, um, a site, uh, subject parcel, site characteristics map and the relative zoning surrounding the property. So at this time, I think.
Mr. Mr. Sweet, like to step up to the podium?
Hi.
Uh, looks pretty straightforward, did you have anything in particular that you wanted to speak about or just entertain questions?
No, I mean, I think Jake did a good job covering everything. Um, we just, you know, prints are expensive, so we wanted to at least get this step done before we went forward with, with any of the prints, we do have an architect that's, you know, ready to go as soon as we tell him to go, so.
Right, any questions from the planning commission? All right, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for making you come back this week.
No, that's all right.
All right, so we close the public hearing, right?
Yep.
Close the public hearing. Discussion with the planning commission. I think we're basically looking for a motion to approve the, the special land use. So one point of discussion would be if we want to see it back here for approval or if we're okay with staff approving it based on what Jake has here.
Can we possibly though scroll to the one public comment? I did not see that clear, and I'd like to.
I don't recall receiving public comment, that may just be a typo from the last one. Uh, I don't, I don't recall receiving an email regarding this. Um, there's been no other, uh, public correspondence, that's just an oversight on my, my end in preparing this, but, um, as it states, uh, the public notice was sent out, um, in accordance to the state law to all properties within three hundred feet. Um, and the public hearing notice was published in the November fourth, two thousand twenty-three edition of the Daily Reporter.
Okay. Uh, Jake, with the site having two zonings, uh, the C-three and the D-one, is mini storage a special use for both or just the C-three?
It is a special use, uh, it's, it's a use that is permitted by special use only for the C-three, not the D-one. Uh, the southern portion of this property is D-one. But I didn't feel like that was reason enough to, uh, not allow this to come before the planning commission. I think if you looked at the zoning, the map that I provided, all of that zoning is a little wonky in that area. Um, and I think that that property most likely should be, uh, rezoned completely to, uh, C-three, uh, highway commercial. Um, so that's something we could look at as a planning commission moving forward, um, the next time that is, that is visited.
Is that an action we can take as a part of the special use permit or is that a separate action?
That would be a separate action because we would be amending the zoning map, so.
The part of the property is only D-three?
Part of the, the northern part of the property is C-three highway commercial and the southern part of the property is D-one, uh, light industrial. I don't know if you can zoom in on that.
But it's, so it's not a permitted special use in D-one?
It is not.
Well, it seems like an issue. Because they intend to use the whole property, right?
That's correct.
I would assume, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would assume we would need to resolve the zoning issue before we could approve special use then because we're gonna have a conflict, I would think.
I would.
Hmm, what's that? Keith? So we got.
Jake, Jake and I did discuss this and I, and, um, we felt as though there is a provision within, each zoning district has a provision for unclassified uses, something that might have not been considered for that district. And, um, to the extent we thought we could, uh, kind of extrapolate that out to, um, D-one, D-one is typically more, um, intense than the C-three. And also D-one allows warehousing in general, not just specifically mini storage. So I think you could, um, during our discussions, I think you could, um, essentially incorporate it in that manner. Um, I, it is cleaner to just totally rezone it and we can do that, um, subsequently, but, um, to help facilitate their request, uh, we thought you could apply it to both districts, um, as part of the special use permit process because in one it is explicit and in the other, it actually allows more intensive uses, including warehousing, but just doesn't say specifically mini storage, um, but does have a provision for unspecified uses as all districts do.
Okay. So it doesn't disallow it, it just doesn't name it specifically, and there is a provision for unspecified uses.
Correct.
We don't feel like the attorney needs to chime in on that or Megan doesn't need to. I'm, I'm just asking the question, we feel like that's legitimate.
I think it's appropriate to the adjoining, obviously the, on the south side, part of the adjoining property that's city park is own, um, C-three, which won't ever be utilized for that purpose, but that's the way it's zoned as it is across the street, and then it's industrial to the, to the east, so.
It does look like there's a cutout there where it's disconnected from others. D-zone, right?
Right, correct, yeah.
The blue part?
So if anything, right, it's just, um, it's just connected at the corner to the other, to the adjacent parcel to the east that fit, that fronts U S twelve. Their neighbor to the east.
Okay, is that clear to everybody?
Is mud, is mud?
I was asking if that was clear to the council.
Is this one parcel number or is this two parcels pushed together?
This is one parcel.
Yeah, okay.
So then what, what do we need to do to get this on the agenda to rezone that particular parcel to clean this up? Is that something that can go on the agenda in January?
It, it could, I think it would be in our best interest, we'll soon be, um, submitting an RFP, uh, to, go over zoning ordinance and master plan. Um, I think it would, it would behoove us to include it in that process and then go through with it at a later date.
It sounds like it fits in within the non-specific use, so I don't, to me it sounds like we're okay.
Through, through both of those processes, we would be evaluating the current zoning. Um, so I think at that time it makes the most sense, rather than kind of doing a one-off and then following up with much larger scope of work.
If you're, if you are agreeable to facilitating what they're proposing currently, then we could, we could piggyback it onto the, the resoning aspect of it, piggyback it onto, as, as Jake suggested. So they currently pay two different tax bases? No, they have a single parcel, single tax bill.
Will they tax under the D-three or do you tax under the C-three?
Well, the assessor doesn't use zoning to, in that manner to, I mean, it's the highest and best use is, is the term that the assessor would use as to what the, how they apply value. So in that perspective, it's, it probably has a higher and best use as the, as an industrial, or those uses that are allowed in the industrial are probably considered to that effect. Okay.
Would it make sense for a motion to include the language for both zones, just to be clear?
Yes.
That makes sense? Okay, further questions? So I think we'd be looking for a motion to include, uh, that the special permitted use in the C-three and the
D-one.
D-one would be the unspecified use, is that what it's called?
Unclassified.
Unclassified use. And then further, we need to decide if we want to see the site plan for review as a planning commission.
I prefer to see it.
I prefer to see it as well, so support that.
All right, so we look for a motion to include those things.
So I'll do that, I'll move to approve the special land use permit request for the commercial mini storage facilities. There's a special use permit in C-three and as an unclassified use in D-one with the stipulation that the site plan comes back to the planning commission for review.
I'll support that.
Okay, everybody clear on the motion? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries, thank you folks. All right. Moving on, we have no further public hearing, no, uh, old business on the agenda. Looking at new business. Back to Jake.
Okay, so a few weeks ago, I forwarded along information, uh, regarding the recreation plan that we have been working on, the two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-nine recreation plan. Um, I believe I included the survey results, the goals and objectives from the last plan, the action plan from the last plan. Um, these plans expired actually, uh, at the beginning of this year. Um, it was supposed to last us until the end of this year, it was, uh, just a mishap in that regard. Um, and then I asked, uh, you know, to think about what goals and objectives you would like to see included into the forthcoming recreation plan along with action items, uh, potential projects, that sort of thing. Um, recommended that you go out to the parks, you know, take a look at what you feel is missing, that sort of thing. Um, so that, the idea tonight is to review the goals and objectives and the action plan, those are the two things that I need the most feedback for in order to, um, keep this plan moving. And this needs to be, uh, submitted to the Department of Natural Resources by February first. Um, so I guess with that, um, hopefully you have reviewed the survey, uh, results, um, there was a lot of good information there. Lot of concerns with, uh, lighting, parking, uh, some safety concerns, a lot of requests for, um, running and biking trails, a lot of requests for, uh, increased use or increased access to water and, uh, usage of the Sauk River. Shade was a big, a big one. Anyways, uh, so tonight, you know, having, hopefully you have reviewed that and I would like to review the goals and objectives first. I guess come to an idea of whether or not you would like to continue with those goals and objectives and if there are any additional goals and objectives you'd like to have included in this. Uh, personally, I feel like goals A through F, um, are still valid and necessary for the plan. Um, so goal A, provide quality leisure time activities with special consideration given to activities improving health and fitness. I don't see any reason why that would be removed. But I'm, again, open to discussion or if you feel it could be, uh, reworded or strengthened in any way, please chime in. Uh, goal B, provide safe, broad, community-based recreation opportunities that improve the overall quality of life for all Coldwater residents. Goal C, provide non-motorized facilities for recreational and transportation use. Goal D, develop recreation opportunities that focus upon and take advantage of Coldwater's water resources. Goal E, retain public land for future generations. Goal F, create community awareness of Coldwater's recreational opportunities and promote them to citizens and visitors. I believe all of those are, are really good goals. Now, obviously I didn't go through each of the objectives, but, um, were there any of those that you felt could be changed or altered or? The only suggestion I have to add as a goal, um, and I'm not exactly certain on how to word this yet, but it would be to, um, emphasize accessibility and inclusivity, um, and through, you know, means of universal design or playgrounds, um, having different language options for, for signage, that sort of thing. And just, uh, focusing on, um, equipment and opportunities for all ages and abilities, that sort of thing, so. I think that would. Okay.
Does even getting onto the playground for wheelchairs?
So any, anything else that you feel should be included?
How did the goals get translated into action? I, I mean, I think that, uh, city and the recreation department have done an awesome job in the past, but how does that happen? How do, how do, how do you decide what projects to take on and where that focuses?
Um, right there, or like First Ward, you know, like they have Lincoln, the parks, is that part of any of this, like?
I'm sorry.
Lincoln, Lincoln School, Lincoln Park, um, do you know what I'm talking about, First Ward?
Water Works.
Water Works, yeah. Um, is like, for example, does this, does, like he says, is a good question, does the city and the, the recreation come together to do it? Or does this, say the people, you know, do they have a say in what they want to see?
Well, we, we did receive the survey results from the public, um, we're using those to, uh, essentially guide us. Um, and so the goals kind of show, this is, this is what we're hoping to do, and then we have objectives for each of that, those goals. And then we use those goals and objectives towards developing the action program, which is what we'll get to next, and that, that, that goes into like the specifics of each project and then, uh, how it relates so that there's an action item, and then how it relates to which goals, and those are listed, and then the justification for those. So this is a, this is essentially a tool for how we navigate moving forward.
So you take the survey results and public input and then the staff that comes up with, from those things, some action items mapped to this, and the staff decides which ones to. Some action items mapped to this and the staff decides which ones to.
Not, not necessarily. Like you said, you're kind of putting this together to use it. The action, the action plan is what we're going to get to next. And I mean, that's, that's why I'm taking. Taking things from the survey results, having the conversation with you, the planning commission, having the same conversation with the recreation board. And then also with the city council. And so this will also have an opportunity for the public to be involved again, not only with the survey, but at a public hearing prior to being adopted. And submitted to the DNR.
That would be easy for like the server to be in like in different languages too. So then. Cause a lot of them, First Ward don't speak English and can't read and write English. And I can only imagine that's a big population of ours town. That use, you know, that Water Works Park and they don't have, you know, accessibility to be able to come and do the surveys.
We did with the Four Corners, they did, they call them charrettes, I think, where they had. A display and the public could come and just talk about it. I think they did it at the. Couple of different places. I think they were at the Chamber of Commerce office. And it was just an open house basically for the public to come and talk about. But ideas for the Four Corners park, but and I guess it depends on how extensive. The action items are because you don't need to do this whole thing if it's just to put new water fountains in or something like that, but.
Any major change?
If you're not aware, the, I think the last council meeting, a major renovation of Water Works Park was approved. I don't know if you were aware of that. Brought in a soccer field and expanded walking, expanded parking. That was approved the last council. It's a combination project between the city and the BPU where the money's coming from, so.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, that's, that's underway right now. And of course, there's major work studying being done on Rotary Park as well, so. And both those things, if you looked at those plans. They fit because they're recreational, they're outdoor. It does a lot of those things, so.
All right, did anybody have any additional input on the goals or this process at all they wanted to share? I think the goals are pretty good.
Now we'll move on to the action program. Again, using the information that was gathered from the surveys. I sat down with a number of. Department, department heads here at the city. We reviewed that data. Had a couple of meetings, couple of discussions. So we have a few ideas in mind. We've also reviewed the old action program. To review like what has been completed, what could be removed because it's been completed, what should, what is still in process? What should be left for the time being because it still hasn't been completed? So I guess, I don't know if you'd like me to start with those or if we just kind of want to. Spitball some ideas and and go from there. I don't. And the reason I say like, I don't, I don't really just want to lead off with like the ideas that the staff has come up with because then I feel like. That's kind of guiding your discussion. That's not really what I'm trying to do. I think I will save. This list for kind of after all of you are a little engaged in the process, so.
Okay. Is there anybody that has anything they'd like to offer?
So what exactly are you, are we looking at some water areas like the, I did notice that on the. Little river that people wanted a kayak area.
Yep, so that was, that is something that we're focusing on, obviously, with the. Potential project Rotary Park. Also, I know that the recreation director is looking into some options for. Like renting kayaks. So there's like a storage unit there that you could use an app and basically it's like a locker for them.
Oh, like for the e-bike kind of thing?
Yeah, similar to that. It's a similar program. So I know that's something that's been tossed around as an idea. The city has recently.
Clean up, um, what's the name of that one? What's the name of that little river that the?
The Sauk River?
Sauk River.
Yep, so the city has started to clear that out and open that up as well. Obviously, there are some properties that. Are private. We would need permission to get back to to clear that for a waterway navigation. But it has started, that started over the summer, towards the end of summer, really. So kind of creating like a Water Works to Rotary or. Something to that extent, that is something we've, we've discussed and have already in a way started on, so.
It sounds like it, yeah. It sounds like there needed to be a lot done at Kids Kingdom too.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, there were a number of complaints regarding King's, uh, Kids Kingdom.
That was evident in the survey of one of the parks that were, had the least satisfaction.
Yeah, and it's the only one that has shade. It's the one you want to go to in the summer because the other ones don't have that abundance of shade, but it's. It's a little gross.
That's a lot of blind spots for children they can.
Yeah.
Jake, I wonder about, as I read through it, there's a couple of those parks mentioned there. I had to admit, I didn't know where they were. They're real small, real small parks, yeah.
The East Point one, I figured out where that was.
Yep, and I mentioned, you know, Four Corners, we've done a lot of work on Rotary Park is, is moving forward. Water Works, you know, we've approved to move forward. I wonder about taking a good look at the rest of those parks, kind of a survey kind of thing. What is there? And what kind of space and what, what, for Jim's benefit, what ward are they in, you know? To look at it, it's, I don't know what, what's there. Maybe a survey and some recommendations that might, what might be done to upgrade or.
Yeah, because some of them are just a small.
Almost a playground.
Yeah.
Maybe there'll never be more than that.
Exclusively, I wouldn't even say a playground, yeah.
Yeah, they're called neighborhood or or pocket parks. I was, so Dean Wallrec was kind enough to provide me. Some GIS data that shows proximity to parks. And so I just kind of pass this around and it shows you, you can see the size of the park and then. You know, how close somebody living near those parks would have to travel to get to one. I would say that, you know, that the second ward. Think lacks in park green space the most. East Point, Optimus Park, which is mostly utilized by. Pan Sophia. There's Jefferson Park, which has.
Minimal.
Yes, and it's relatively old equipment as well. So I mean, this was another thing that the staff talked about was, you know, doing an audit of each of the parks and identifying. Things that could be updated or addressed with each of those.
It's kind of a, interesting too, because like Jefferson Park is next to the, the school, which does have. Playground things, so would that be reinventing a, like, why would you want them right next to each other particularly? Maybe you could do something else in that spot. I don't know.
It's kind of audits, another good term. I said survey, but audits probably another, and that, the survey you did. Pointed out pretty much what people wanted. You could, you could see it in there. And so it's a matter of, okay, with that need. What could be done with those parks? We kind of got to really know what's there. Really got to know what's there. I think that would be helpful for staff too, to then make some recommendations on what could be plugged in or just updated. I mean, some of it might be old and. Just need major maintenance or replacement.
Does Pan Sophia do anything to the parks or do they? Maintain it or anything to the one that they use?
I believe we plan to have a meeting with the principal come January. I know that there were discussions. I saw an email.
They just reached out within the last couple of weeks and so the, the council has been. Been informed and so there's going to be some discussions moving forward as to how they could partner because they want to, seeing some of the other improvements around. The other parks, they want to engage and, and help lead an effort to do, do improvements there at Optimus Park, so.
Since they use it so often, yeah.
Yeah, so to date, no, other than maybe spring cleanups or they get students out there and help pick up the park and that type of thing, but. Maintenance wise, there hasn't been any involvement by Pan Sophia, but now with their expansion complete. And their renovations complete and having seen what we have planned for Rotary and Water Works and Heritage and Four Corners.
East Point looks like a nice park too. Or is it East Point, is that what it's called?
For as, for as small as it is, so, so yes, that's, and as one of the council members from the second ward noted at the last meeting, you know. Paying attention to second ward and, and that being in second ward would be that and Parkers are probably the next two. Most active parks and they're also probably the two that that need the most.
Attention.
Attention going forward.
Keith, because the month's title Optimus Park, does the, does the Optimus Club need to be at the table?
Oh, definitely, yeah. We'll invite them to.
I assume they put something into it at one point to have the name on it.
So we've, we've hit up the Rotaries in the past and Kiwanis is really involved at Heritage with the, with the Sludding Hill and. So yes.
So I have a question about the non-motorized transportation, so. A big stretch of US twelve and Marshall Street being reduced to really two lanes of traffic and a turn lane. Can those edges of the road be designated as bike?
I believe they currently are, yes. I believe.
So. Take, take Jake's thunder, but. So M dot would tell you that they don't want them designated, but they can be, people utilize them for it. So US twelve. They won't formally designate them, but they are available for that purpose. I'll say, Marshall is local jurisdiction. It is the city road, so. I don't know that we have signage specific to that, but it, but we can. When you're on division, that's part of the business loop, so that's state right of way and US twelve is wider state right of way, but going north on Marshall, that's. City right of way. But we incorporate, I mean, we envision it or we. We consider it for that purpose.
I just, you know, like on Butter's Avenue headed north towards US twelve, there's, you know, the little pedestrians painted along there. And so the lack of bicycles painted there led me to believe it wasn't to be used. So I guess that's just good information.
How about bigger projects like? Pickleball courts or stuff like that to use?
Just go to the township.
Yeah, well, the township facility seems like it's heavily used. And I'm wondering if that's just good enough for the whole area or if the city would be interested in expanding. I know. The park over by the school has the tennis court there that can be used for that, but I guess the tennis courts can be too, right?
So two, two of the tennis courts as part of its renovation last year are striped for pickleball as well, so two of the eight. But they, in the future, could be double striped. That's always a point of contention with tennis aficionados, but, but yeah, and we have the four courts at Parkers that.
Right.
Where we paved, those were the first courts within the community. As, as ever, as that sport became more popular and it was a converted basketball court. So to the extent that we need more, that the community identifies a need for more, we can. Look at, look at expanding that. We use, I know the.
Heritage.
The, the, yeah, the multipurpose courts indoors at the rec center get, get utilized quite a bit, booked up for that during the course of the winter. But we're limited there to just the two, I believe it's two courts there, so.
At the, in the building?
Yeah.
No, they have, they have a lot. It depends on how many people are using the courts, but. I think that we've played when there's been like six or eight.
They could, they could squeeze that many in. I haven't talked to Julie.
Yeah, yeah, and there's, sometimes there's a lot of courts out there, yeah.
Imagine those are expensive, but it seems like the tennis courts are heavily used. And the township courts are heavily used. It seems like there's demand for more capacity. I don't know, I could.
That wasn't, that wasn't reflective in the survey results. I believe there was only one comment pertaining to pickleball. So, I mean, as Keith was alluding to, I'm not sure it's a. Demonstrated as a need at this point.
They're very expensive for maintenance too.
Yeah.
Millions.
Expensive to install.
A lot of money when we did, redid the tennis court and we let it go so long because it was so expensive to fix. So I think. When you're trying to look at projects to do, you have to be very careful about what the maintenance of those are going to be and that's. As a city, I think that's why we strung them a little bit.
Right.
Of trying to maintain some of these parks just because of the, the cost of upkeep parks.
A lot of parks.
Instead of setting it for infrastructure for streets and in stuff like that.
That makes sense.
It's not necessarily what amenities or courts or what you have at the parks as well. So I'm in fourth ward. Walk by Riverside all the time and having a nice open green area is important as well. I will say lighting can be an issue, especially at this time of year. They're getting darker earlier, so maybe personally that'd be something I'd like to see, but.
What was that part?
Uh, lighting.
Oh, lighting.
Oh, especially down there by that. Water Works, Linear, Linear Park and the, whatever the other one's called.
Well, we'll approach the electrical engineer on that at the BP, at the BPU and.
Will you offer me for that? They taught you better. They can, some industrial customers. No, no, no.
So the. The data collected from the survey responses. Trails, access to water, clearing the river, safety, parking, lighting. Complaints about Water Works and how it used to be. There were a number of those.
With all the weeds growing?
Yep, complaints about the development or sole focus in the third ward. Lack of, and I don't know, this was a geared towards youth programming and I don't know if that is. Due to declining numbers or what that was. I, from what I've gathered, I think there's a. Incredible amount of youth programming offered or provided. Complaints about Kid, Kids Kingdom. Complaints about the bathrooms and then a lack of shade. The heaviest things that we saw in the survey responses. Some of the, and this is not all, I mean, this is just some of the suggested actions by staff. And the rec board, the rec board would specifically like to see some type of passage. Or bridge, some type of connection from Heritage to Rotary. Just with the concerns with US twelve and safety crossing that. And emphasis on art sculptures, statue, that sort of thing within city parks. Lighting. Development of. Parks or facilities on the eastern part of town, there's more and more. Housing development, apartment development, just development in general on the eastern side of town and. No recreation access over there. So that may require some land acquisition, that sort of thing. A large scale playground at Heritage to replace the current one, placing that next to the splash pad. Tree planting for shade, specific areas were Heritage Park, the Dog Park, Linear Park, Parkers Park and Optimus Park.
Is the Dog Park part of the recreation? Parks?
It is. It is a part of cities, yeah. Clear, clearing out the river. Looking at kayak launch, whether that's Water Works to Rotary or even moving further up the river. The city owns some property on Tanner Run that is pretty low and marshy that, you know, could be utilized in that regard. So having a few different drop in and get out points and then expanding parking.
So you can solve your. So you can solve your bridge issue that you want to just float from one park to the other.
We need a ferry.
Riverboat.
Now we're diving back a hundred years because it used to be one out on North Chilox.
Really?
Oh, yeah.
Right. Should reincarnate that thing.
Put a casino on it?
Then you get into international water.
I'm trying to update the five-year plan. We're not trying to reinvent the wheel, but we are trying to recognize and identify what we're going to work on for the next five years, so. And then get it in time, get it submitted in time for us to be able to apply for grants beginning next spring, so.
Any other item, action items, things that you would like the staff to include or focus on over the course of the next five years?
I think, you know, when you had said making things accessible, that that's something we really need to do with, with our parks because it really is difficult if you've got a language barrier, if you have a physical barrier. There isn't a, there's a few things, but maybe that kid can't get to that thing.
One thing too, that we should also remember, you're talking about parks and, you know, not everything's always in the Third Ward. A lot of people forget, we put a lot of money to the playground at Jefferson School because it didn't make sense to put a playground next to a playground. So people always forget that, that we invested a lot of money. I think it was $70,000 back at the time, I don't know if you remember Tom. But, you know, a lot of people always don't give us credit for what that is. That would not be as nice of a playground without the city co-watering that park. You being new, I don't know if you, you might, it was probably before your time. So a lot of people forget that, that we've spent money to the school, gave money to the schools to have, when they were doing the renovations, to make a much nicer park.
I understand that, but these are just comments from the survey.
No, 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 I get it, but I just love people-
To give people the opportunity to be heard.
Right, just I think-
They will take advantage of it.
Institutional memories lacking, rather than me and Tom probably on that one, so.
Well, thank God for you.
Please don't, please don't. I'm not that important.
But you know, you, we had discussed that Jefferson Park a little bit. Maybe we need to make that park not a playground park, but make it into something else and see what people want to use that for because the school is right there.
I prefer housing.
Wherever you want to build, bud.
But you can make it, you can make it, that was the thing, is that make one a nicer park versus two mediocre parks. So that's why we put the money in the, which, they have a real nice playground there.
Yeah.
You look at any of the schools though, you see kids out there after school. They're all playing and weekends and stuff. So all the schools are acting as a park too.
Yes.
So.
You're right. And I know the, for long, since we're talking about Jefferson, that playground there, because they wanted to keep the ball field, but it's been proven over the years that the ball field probably isn't used, but that corner playground area, everybody says, you didn't do anything there. Well, it's going to be put in, but there's a significant amount of property there. So anyway, good for thought. Paying for an action item or what's the next step?
Uh, this was just a discussion, just giving me some direction. We're, we're going to be submitting this to the DNR on February 1st. So we were just reviewing the goals and objectives and action items, action plan. So I will take that feedback, I will incorporate that to the plan. And I'll bring that plan to you at our next meeting for review. That will be, that, there will be a public hearing held with the city council on January 22nd, 22nd, at which point we would expect that to be approved and then submitted to the DNR shortly after, pending any changes last minute or other. So I will have that document ready for your review before the next meeting. And if there's anything you'd like me to change at that time, I would be happy to provide that feedback to the city council for them to make that decision. Yeah.
Cool. All right. Seeing nothing in communications, we have an item in administrative report.
Yep, so recently received a change to the Voltec site plan. It's a change to the retention pond location. That is being reviewed by the city's engineer. As soon as that is given the go-ahead, I will approve that and send that over. Intend to be issuing an approval for Foam Products site plan in the coming days. We've had some people on vacation that I needed to take a look at some things. So I expect that soon. I did receive a special use permit application for the property at 295 South Clay. That, the intention is to open a salon. This should be a relatively simple one as well. The owner intends to resurface the parking lot as well. So that's, that's a huge win for that property. And since the last meeting, the ZBA request from Clemens was approved by the board for the asphalt millings rather than truly impervious surface. I've already stated that the rec plans due February 1st. I will be in the coming weeks and months working on a special assessment process for some sidewalks in a neighborhood, working to help the city achieve the MEDC redevelopment-ready community certification, submitting RFPs for the zoning ordinance and master plan, and continuing to work on the USDA housing preservation grants. And then the stats for October and November for the Neighborhood Services Department. There were 49 permits issued, one new build at 6 Amber View Court, 312 rental inspections, one of which was 210 apartments at Sock and 72 apartments at Colony House, 356 building inspections, and 96 enforcements. Any other questions, concerns, something I can report on to you? Okay.
All right. I guess we will see you all at the next quarterly meeting then. January 15th, and we urge you. Thanks, everybody.